Welcome, everyone. I call the February 21st City Council Meeting to order. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Mayor Polly will be arriving a little late tonight's meeting, so I, Council President Walsh, will serve as Mayor pro tem until her arrival. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx, and Councilmember Hunt is also attending tonight's meeting remotely. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Audience Comments. Members of the public may address council at this time either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you're going to press *3. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. We don't have anyone else in the room. So Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
We have no members of the public online at this time.
Okay. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawawa.gov. And part of this section, I usually summarize email comments on tonight's agenda item. We did have one comment from the Master Builders Association disagreeing with or asking for delays on the impact fee, AB 8507, amending the impact and mitigation fees, which is on tonight's consent agenda. And we had one member of the community disagree with the change presented in AB 8565, amending the council meetings' rules of procedure regarding the order of business. And that concludes the items we received from the public on those. The next item on our agenda is, I believe, Committee and Regional Reports. It is. We will start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Today, we had the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee meeting, and we had a number of topics. The one that is probably most pertinent to Issaquah was the discussion of the FIS passage construction that will be necessary by WASTOT. And we had a good conversation about what it might look like in the future and potential costs that could accrue to all the members of Cascade Water Alliance, depending on how the project turns out. It was put off for future discussion, and I'll keep updating the council as we go forward as this involves a big project in town for us. On February 22nd, the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting will be held. Councilmember Ray has graciously agreed to attend as I will be out of town that day. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember De Machell.
Thank you. On February 10th, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership, and on February 15th, the Regional Transit Committee. And at both the ETP and the RTC, we received a report on metro transit's recovery from the pandemic. There is somewhat good news. Over the past year, there has been a steady increase in ridership. They are now serving between 210,000 and 230,000 passengers each day, which is 34% higher than it was a year ago, but it's still far less than the 280,000 that they were serving in February of 2020. The system is continuing to struggle with service delivery, as we discussed last week. A year ago, 94% of scheduled buses were showing up. In other words, 6% did not show up when they were supposed to. This year, 97% of the scheduled buses are showing up. So there has been a slight improvement, but the general manager acknowledged that even 3% missing buses imposes an unacceptable burden on riders. And as members of RTC, we are able to read letters from passengers who have been stuck in the snow and rain and cold, waiting for buses that simply don't show up, and you begin to understand the human impact on them. The main cause is Metro's inability to recruit and retain enough drivers. And Metro has been working with its several unions to streamline recruiting, training, safety, and job satisfaction for its drivers and other employees. In addition to driver retention, the steering mechanism in over 600 buses were found to be defective and had to be replaced. And that process took longer than expected due to supply chain issues. So when it rains, it pours, apparently. So they have really been struggling. On the sustainability front, Metro has reduced their fossil fuels by usage by 26% over the last five years. They replaced all electric lights with LED lights, and they are now saving over $4 million annually on energy costs. Over the next five years, they are going to replace all their HVAC systems with energy-efficient units, and so that, in that area, they feel like they're making good progress. In addition to the general manager's report, we also received a report on the funding gap for Metro Connects, which is Metro's long-range strategic planning document. Very, very broadly, Metro Connects envisions a doubling of service by the year 2050. That vision is currently underfunded to the tune of $18 billion for capital and $725 million annual operating costs. So plans for bridging the gap were suspended in 2020 due to the pandemic. There was a lot of discussion that unfortunately ended up not going much of anywhere. So we had quite a vigorous discussion at RTC about putting that topic back on the agenda, restarting the discussions, and starting to look at how Metro can close that funding gap. And 2050 will be here before we know it. Seems like a long way away, but Metro needs to start working on this problem now. So that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we are going to go virtually to Councilmember Hunt for your regional report.
Thank you, Council President. The Planning Development and Environment Committee met on February 7th. We had a discussion about Title 18, which is our ongoing process of updating our land use code for the city of Issaquah. And we focused in two areas. One was we discussed the Planning Policy Commission's recommendation on a number of items. Our Volunteer Planning Policy Commission has done a lot of work reviewing this code, and they had recommendations on a number of items for us to consider. These included things such as in looking at the code around non-conforming buildings and wetland buffers, zero-lot-line buildings, and questions around deviations or variances in the code. And so we are continuing to have conversations about these topics for the next meeting of the Planning Development and Environment Committee. And from that meeting, we will have recommendations to this council on a number of topics that I just mentioned, but also other topics. So I will come back to you shortly with those recommendations, once they're finalized. I also wanted to flag for council that as we are nearing the end of the Planning Development and Environment Committee's review and the Planning Policy Commission's review and all of our other board and commission review processes, we are approaching the time when this item will come back to the full council for full council review. And the committee will be discussing, sorry about the background music, the committee will be discussing a number of items. So according to the order, I will raise those. Our next meeting is February 28th. Thanks.
Thank you. And next is Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. The Mobility Infrastructure and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting in a special meeting on a special day, Monday, February 27th, and the agenda has not been set. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, Melta, met on Wednesday, February 8th. There was discussion of solid waste rate restructuring, as well as a discussion on affordable housing county-wide planning policies. However, no actions were taken or scheduled for the next meeting. Council Services Safety and Parks Committee will be meeting tomorrow, a special time and date, 6:30 to 9:00 here, or 6:30 till whenever, really, here in council chambers. We have two items on the agenda, ID 1354, around the topic of City Hall and Issaquah Police Department Access Control Project, and ID 1388, Emergency Financial Assistance, Housing Assistance, I believe. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you very much. Quick one. So the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors last met on Thursday, February 9th, at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. During the meeting, we elected board leadership. So North Bend Councilmember Alan "Gotham," right? I can never pronounce his last name correctly. Was re-elected chair, and I was re-elected vice chair of the board. We also approved new members to the Finance and Administration Committee, so I will serve as Issaquah's representative there. We also had a really interesting discussion about EFR's emergency response model and ambulance rates and how insurance fits and all that. So, so much so, actually, that we're going to be getting a briefing as a board and press a couple presentations on the topic. So if you're interested in kind of being included and learning more about that, just get in touch with me, and I'm happy to share what we're going through. Finally, just a reminder that the Annual Awards and Recognition Banquet is Friday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Snoqualmie Casino. I believe everyone should have received an invite from the EFR's Board Secretary. But if you're interested in going, please let me know so I can keep our city clerk apprised of how many council members are going to be there. I'm also happy to share the invite out again. So feel free to just reach out to me if you would like that link, because RSVPs are due this Thursday. And that concludes my report.
Great. And the next report is mine. The King County Affordable Housing Committee meets in person, in person this Thursday for a joint meeting with the Growth Management Planning Council at Kirkland City Hall. This is going to be kind of the handoff from the Affordable Housing Committee to the Growth Management Committee to discuss the countywide planning policies that are scheduled for adoption in the next few months. And then separately, the next meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board is set for next week on Thursday. The agenda's not yet been released. And then, as a final report, Deputy Council President Hall, myself, and City Administrator Bob Quitz went down to Olympia last week for City Action Days. We had a great time. This is an event hosted by the Association of Washington Cities to meet with our legislators, hear about some of the big topics that are happening at the legislative session this year. So the first day, we met with some of the AWC lobbyists, some of the State Department heads. We also heard from Governor Inslee about his budget proposal. And then the second day, we met with our lobbyists and then had great meetings with all six of our legislators from the 5th and the 41st districts. And we really focused in. We had like 15 to 20-minute sessions with each set of them. So we focused on our top three priorities, which was the funding for the park project, which seems positive. We'll see if that makes it into the budget. Affordable housing, there's a lot of things going on right now. We also heard from Representative Bateman, who's kind of driving that HB 1110 earlier, and just kind of discussed some of the things that were specific to our city. And then we really encouraged, the Highway 18 has been broken up into kind of three projects. You've got the interchange, and then the first portion and the second portion. The governor's budget shifted so that the interchange would be complete. The first portion would be complete, and then there would be a gap in years between the second portion. And so we really encouraged that to just continue, keep that workforce working as one of our priorities. So those were kind of the things we discussed. Again, great meetings. I think they really appreciated hearing from the city of Issaquah. So that concludes our Committee and Regional Reports. The next section is the Mayor's Report. And since she is not yet here, I am going to go ahead and read off the Mayor's Report. First, there will not be an executive session this evening. Second, Board and Commission Annual Recruitment. Issaquah is continuing to accept applications for all city boards and commissions. Our boards and commissions cover a broad range of topics: arts, economic development, environmental issues, growth, and even international diplomacy. We value a variety of perspectives and life experiences and encourage people of all backgrounds to apply. Members serve without compensation, but may be eligible to participate in the city's stipend program. Please help us spread the word about our various board and commission opportunities. To learn more about boards and commissions and to apply, go to issaquawawa.gov/apply. Nominations for the Ruth Keyes Award for Sustainable Environment are community's highest honor for environmental advocates, and the Community Environmental Award are now open. Keyes's namesake award honors the legacy of a grassroots activist who, for more than four decades, advocated for the preservation of landmarks and natural areas, sustainable development, recycling programs, and the protection of the Esquiva Valley Aquifer and Tiger Mountain. To learn more and submit a nomination, please see the city's website, issaquawawa.gov. The nomination deadline is 5:00 PM on March 13th, 2023. And upcoming community events. There is an open house with the Newport neighborhood. The city invites you to attend an open house on Thursday, March 9th, 2023, as we talk about upcoming projects within the Newport neighborhood. Join your neighbors to learn more about timelines, impacts, and changes that are being planned over the next several years. Staff will be present to help talk through projects and answer questions. Refreshments will be provided. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. So, looking through the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Okay. And I see another from Councilmember Hunt. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I'm not seeing any. And do we have anyone who could make a motion?
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's packet.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion to approve the consent calendar as presented has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. The motion before council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. And the next item of business is on regular business. So we have two items, AB 8511 and AB 8569, which will be presented together. These both discuss information on the 12th Avenue Northwest and State Route 917th Avenue project. I'd like to invite Traffic Signal Operations Engineer Isabel Diaz and Public Works Director Emily Moon to present these items. I see you guys getting set up over there. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you, City Council. I'm going to share video here. And we'll get started. All right. I am Emily Moon, Public Works Director. Happy to be here tonight to talk about a significant project, the last of the Costco Development Agreement projects. And as the council president mentioned, there are two agenda bills before you. One deals with approving the construction management contract, and the second awards the actual construction contract. There were three projects that were included in the Master Transportation Funding Agreement, which was a portion of the overall development agreement. And that transportation agreement included the way in which the city and Costco share in the cost of the projects. Those three projects were East Lake Sam Parkway, Southeast 62nd Street Extension. And tonight, we're talking mainly about 12th Avenue SR 900 intersection improvements. And these projects were first scoped and identified as the projects that Costco would contribute to in order to meet their traffic concurrency needs and also assist in the city building our transportation infrastructure that we had in our plans. They were forecast to cost between $51 and $57 million. Huge investment by the city. So that first project was East Lake Sammamish Parkway. I have two images here, before and after for you. We completed that project in 2016, made it a multimodal facility, adding a southbound lane, sidewalk, bike lane, landscape, curbs, and gutter. Second project was Southeast 62nd Street Extension. This included a bridge and new multimodal facilities, including a new underpass for the regional trail. This was the city's largest capital improvement, and it was completed in very early 2019. I wanted to give you an overview of how we have cost shared on these projects as we move into considering funding for the final project. So I have a few graphics to show you. The first here shows how we split the costs by tier. So the first tier was significant. It was the first $51 million-plus in investments that both the city and Costco were to make, shared 52-48 split. And then the next two tiers moved between city to Costco, both at $2.5 million. The final tier was to be for anything over $56.5 million roughly. And that was to be costs borne by the city. And again, this is eligible cost. There have been costs associated with all of these projects that weren't eligible under that transportation agreement. Sometimes we take on improvements to infrastructure that's not related to traffic improvements, for example. This next graphic just shows you the cost sharing at the tier level, and it shows you what we accomplished in that first tier. We were able to get East Lake Sammamish Parkway and the Southeast 62nd Extension fully completed, and we were able to have some funds to put toward the final project, 12th Avenue and SR 900 intersection. We're estimating, based on the costs to date and the bid that we have received for construction, that we will utilize all of Tier 2, which is the city's responsibility, and we will use most of Costco's share of that third tier to accomplish all of the eligible for cost-sharing costs for this project. And then lastly, I just wanted to show you those eligible costs. You will see we spent about $8.5 million on East Lake Sammamish Parkway, $38.4 roughly for Southeast 62nd. And the eligible costs for 12th Ave are listed as just over $9.1 million. So at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Isabel, and she is going to share some more detail about the scope for this last project.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening. As Emily mentioned, this project is the project number three and the last project to be built under the Costco Development Agreement on 12th Avenue and SR 900 intersection. Part of the improvements included for this project would include two left-turning lanes from 12th Avenue to 17th Avenue on the south. We currently have one left-turn lane, and adding that extra capacity for left-turn lanes with the additional left-turning lane. In addition to that left-turning lane, we are adding a right-turning lane along this area from 17th Avenue to 12th Avenue Northeast, also adding more capacity to the intersection, this time with the right-turning movements. And also, we will be rebuilding the cross-section, roadway cross-section for 12th Avenue Northwest all the way from the intersection of 17th Avenue to Lake Drive. And the cross-section for that segment between 17th and Lake Drive will include protected bike lanes, sidewalks on both sides, and also planning, planning strips. And this project is anticipated to be completed at the fourth quarter of this year. Earlier this month, we advertised this project for construction, and once we received the bids, we had a better understanding of the overall project cost and also, over time, about the scope of the work to be completed. Back in 2014, when the Costco Development Agreement was executed, this project was estimated for about $3 million. Over time, once we worked with CIP process development, the cost of the overall project was refined, and the latest CIP update that we had included, budgeted this project, we estimated an overall project cost of $6.6 million. And now that we have advertised a project and have a better understanding of the project's scope, and we have, oh, sorry about that, and we had a lower bidder identified, the most updated overall project cost is around $9.8 million. And these areas that we have here highlighted in yellow are those parts of the overall project cost that have increased significantly in value. And for that, we have identified the right-of-way, construction, and construction management. And on the next slide, I will explain a little bit more on the reasons why these three areas have increased significantly. But before that, I would like to note that for construction management, or reminder that construction management, for that, we include inspection services and also material testing that are required during the completion of the project. There are a few complexities with this project that have contributed, in part, with the increase on these three areas of right-of-way, construction, and construction management. For right-of-way, as we may be aware, we are negotiating with three different parcels and owners of those three parcels. And also, the latest sales that have occurred within that area have contributed significantly with the increase of the cost of the land that we are acquiring on that area. For the construction, we are, in addition to the improvements that I have explained earlier, we are also adding the replacement of the water mainline. And this is something that we typically try to do with CIP projects, look at underground utilities that need replacement. So when we do CIP projects, we try to look for opportunities to include those utility relocations with the CIP project. The other item is a damaged signal pole that was not part of the initial scope of the project, because that signal pole was in good shape. There was not a need to relocate that signal pole. However, it was impacted by a traffic collision last year, unfortunately. And we had a structural However, it was impacted by a traffic collision last year, unfortunately, and we had a structural engineer look at the signal pole and recommended that we replace that signal pole, and it made sense to us to, since we are improving this intersection at this time, to relocate that signal pole at the same time instead of having to go to that signal impacts twice on different times. Lastly, the inflation. We have seen some ups and downs with specific items from construction, but overall, we have seen increases over time with the overall project costs. For the construction management, one of the items that is contributing significantly or that we consider a complexity that may contribute significantly to the project cost is that this 12th and SR 900 is a very busy signal, and it's actually the second busiest signal that we own and operate. And because of that, when we are impacting the traffic signal, we prefer per-city standards that we do that during the night. So there is some night work that will be expected with this project. We will also be doing some work within Washdod's right-of-way. This is additional coordination that we need to include for the project and also go through Washdod's standards with the construction and coordination for working on their right-of-way. The other item is the monitoring of cultural resources. So this is something that we don't typically see on our CIP projects, but since we were required to complete a permit with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, this is a requirement, it was part of the requirement of this permit, that we do complete a cultural resources monitoring and develop a plan to what to do, what are the next steps in case that we find an archaeological find. In terms of construction management, we have, in the past, successfully used consultants to do construction management, like, for example, even Southeast 62nd Street Extension project. For that project, we have successfully used consultants to do construction management. Those are expertise that we can use through the construction of the project, and they would help the city administration to provide that level of professionalism that Costco will be expecting from us and help us to have all the administrative papers, have everything in place for getting these reimbursements from Costco when we go through the development agreement process. And also, one other thing I wanted to mention on that, for the construction management, they also provide expertise coordinating with the contractor and also help the city saving money through the process, reducing the likelihood of getting change orders with all their expertise that they provide that we, with the city staff, might not be able to have, but they are more of an expansion of our services. And with that, I will turn it over to Emily so she can talk about the proposed amendment.
Thanks. Okay. As we request council's approval tonight to award the construction bid, we're also sharing the adopted and proposed funding sources for this project. The city has been successful on this project, just like it had on the other projects for the Costco DEA, to get outside funding sources, including grants. And as is the case with multi-year capital projects with a variety of funding sources and post-bid, we have information now that we can plug into the budget scenario. This project will require a budget amendment to roll forward funds previously received but not yet spent, and we will require a tuning up of the project's costs so that we can obligate Costco for their share. And as you see, we have a gap still after all of that. That gap is roughly $670,000, and we're showing that in yellow here on this table, and I'm going to talk to that in just a minute. The 2324 adopted budget included $400,000 for the water main replacement and anticipated the reauthorization of those unspent 2022 funds of roughly $4.5 million. That gives us a total budget in your adopted budget of $4.9 million. And the budget amendment will be needed to add in all of those remaining expenditures that we have talked to at the previous slides. So that is roughly $2.7 million. Also, I wanted to remind you, as it says on the slide, most of those budget increases that will be reflected in the budget amendment have been covered by these funding sources shown here. Again, the gap is $670,000, and we intend to continue to make sure that we're getting all that was earmarked for this project from various funding sources, and we have continued to speak with Costco about their cost obligation. So based on the current expenditure estimate, staff recalculated that portion to be funded by the Costco agreement, and we have had some conversations about how to fund that project budget gap. Administration proposes making up this difference by shifting over the 2023 budgeted traffic impact fees from another capital project that has been significantly delayed and will not be spent in 2023. That's the Newport Way Maple to Sunset Improvements, or TR 23. That project is expected to be delayed later this spring, which is when we would have started the next phase of work, for possibly multiple years while we wait for the biological assessment to be reviewed by the National Marine Fisheries Service. The city's code allows for 12th Avenue to receive the traffic impact fees. It's an eligible project for those fees. So the administration proposes reauthorizing the expenditures and starting fresh with the revenue adjustments that we've shown. This will help us have a clean start on the project and will help us to increase the transparency about how the project is funded and help us to do the cost accounting that we need to do with the funders. So we're asking for your approval on those two agenda bills this evening. That will enable us to commence with the construction and add the capacity that was envisioned in this intersection. Delaying the project at this point in time may mean that we have some cost implications. It likely means Costco is not getting the improvement that they had believed they would be getting in a timely fashion and in sequence with their construction and occupancy of their buildings, and would also likely mean that we would have to go back and renegotiate those temporary construction easements. Those are time-limited. So these are the two motions that we have for you in the AB 8511. Authorize the mayor to enter into and execute Amendment Number 5 with HDR Incorporated for the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northeast Improvement Project, TR 4, in the amount of $1,049,714, with a term ending in February of '24. And the second is to award the construction contract for that same project in the amount of $4,596,469.49, including sales tax, to Fury Site Works Incorporated, and direct the chief financial officer to allocate an additional $2,696,304 of expenditures and $8,160,885 of revenue for this project in a future 2023 budget amendment. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, great. Let's start with questions. I see Deputy Council President Hunt followed by Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you. So a lot of complexities that you summarized there that clearly are impacting timing and cost and all that. So I just wanted to ask, kind of zoom out and think big picture, too. Are we, I mean, would you describe this as kind of unique to this particular project, all these complexities and the level of complexities? Or should council think of this as indicative of emerging problem that we're seeing with all of our capital projects, that there are layers of complexities that are contributing to cost?
Sure. Well, every project is different. Indeed, this project has more than its fair share, I think, of complexities, given its location, first and foremost. I think the other factor here is that this project was originally envisioned nearly, well, 10 years ago. So a lot has changed since that point in time. As to what it means for other projects, I'd have to overgeneralize. Certainly, we find that there are complexities with every project, and every project needs some truing up typically before you go to bid, after it's lived in the CIP for a little bit, and after you go to bid when you know the numbers are real.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. I have a question. When was the most recent time we did a traffic model with levels of service? And do we know how this, how these, I'm excited about this. I think it'll improve traffic, but I'd love to know that we know what that's going to do to levels of service.
Sure, sure. We're taking traffic counts right about now as we update our concurrency model and ultimately concurrency policy. So we're gathering that data right now. As to the last time we got data on this intersection, see if Isabel knows.
Yes. To answer a little bit, add on a little bit to that. So this intersection has been identified as, the latest model that we have done in 2017 has been identified of one of the intersections that we needed to improve capacity on. And we are currently working on updating our traffic signal model, and these improvements will be considered as part of the new base model for this year. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yes, and answered kind of the question behind the question, which is, we have not updated our model since 2017? Is that what you said? Yeah, seems timely. Seems like six years is a little long. And I know there was this whole COVID thing in between, but still, seems timely.
Yes, you are correct, and you are correct, again, that COVID had a huge reason why we have waited for this time, and we are still in compliance with our requirement of, just with, because of COVID, traffic, we're just waiting to have like what we call the normal, and now that traffic has coming back to where we are, that's where we decided to update the model or do the counts to update the model.
Got it. It would be so wonderful to be able to tell folks, well, we're spending this money, but here's what it's doing to traffic, to make traffic better in the city, because a few people are interested in that subject. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. I think those are our questions. So at this point, I'm going to see if we have a motion, and I'll note that if the motion maker wants to put those two motions together, we can, or we can do them separately. Either way, so is there a motion? Deputy Council President Hall?
Yeah, I'll do it. All right. So I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute Amendment Number 5 with HDR Incorporated for the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northeast Improvement Project, TR 004, in the amount of $1,049,714, with a term ending in February 2024, and to award the construction contract for the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northeast Improvement Project, TR 004, in the amount of $4,596,469.49, including sales tax, to Fury Site Works Incorporated, and direct the chief financial officer to allocate an additional $2,696,304 of expenditures and $8,160,885 of revenue for this project in a future 2023 budget amendment.
Thank you both. The joint motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, sounds like presentation was done quite well. So the motion before us is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute Amendment Number 5 with HDR Incorporated for the 12th Avenue Northwest and State Route 900/17th Avenue Northeast Improvement Project, TR 004, in the amount of $1,049,714, with a term ending in February 2024, and award the construction contract for the 12th Avenue Northwest and SR 900/17th Avenue Northeast Improvement Project, TR 004, in the amount of $4,596,469.49, including sales tax, to Fury Site Works Incorporated, and direct the chief financial officer to allocate an additional $2,696,304 of expenditures and $8,160,885 of revenue for this project in a future 2023 budget amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the information. The next item of business is AB 8565, amending the Isco Municipal Code 2.06, Council Meetings and City Council Rules of Procedure Regarding the Order of Business. And we're inviting City Clerk Tisha Geezer to introduce this item.
Good evening, council. This is Tisha Geezer, City Clerk. I don't have a presentation planned tonight, but I'll briefly introduce this item. So as you recall, this agenda bill is an outcome of the new business request that was submitted by Deputy Council President Hall and presented at the January 17th council meeting. The staff provided a brief response at the February 6 council meeting, and at that meeting, the council approved or directed the administration to go ahead and implement the changes that were contemplated in the new business request. So there are two pieces of legislation in your agenda packet tonight. The first is a proposed ordinance that amends the city council's order of business for regular council meetings to move those action items, being the consent calendar, public hearings, regular business, and new business, up in the order of business to come immediately after audience comments. The second piece of legislation is a resolution which would amend the council rules. It would mimic the order of business in the Isco Municipal Code, and it includes a few additional provisions, specifically making space for a committee chair to provide some comments before the consent calendar if that chair didn't have an opportunity to provide a verbal report on an item recommended by the committee that's on the consent calendar. The proposed rules also make space for the mayor to make similar comments of an informational nature pertaining to a consent calendar item before the motion to approve the consent calendar. And the proposed amendments also reiterate the council's practice, which is if there's a desire to discuss or to have a separate vote on an item, that that council member pull an item down from the consent calendar. So with that, I'm available if there are any questions.
Excellent. And checking in with the council members, I don't think I see any questions. So at this point, I am wondering if there is a motion I can make if nobody else does. Yeah, okay. I move to adopt ordinance number? Amending IMC 2.06.100, City Council Meetings Order of Business, and approve resolution number?
2023-4.
Okay. Am- Okay, amending the city council rules of procedure, section four, council meetings, and section six, standing committees. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Yes, Councilmember Ray.
I would defer to the motion maker if you wanted to go first.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Generally, I am really in favor of trying new things, and trying them, evaluating them, and seeing how well they, how well they work, and the impact on how we do our business. So the last couple of council meetings, I have spent an inordinate amount of attention listening to committee, regional, and the mayor's reports. And what I noticed in those reports is an awful lot of that information isn't directed to the council, it's directed at the public. And so, I mean, tonight, I mean, Councilwoman DeMichelle gave a beautiful report on all the things that are happening around transit, which I think is also very important to the public. And then the mayor's report had a request for people who are interested in boards and commissions, and those are things also aim very much at the public. The limited public feedback we did here said that this was important to the public, that we covered this early in the meeting, that this wasn't something to be moved to the back of the meeting, that this provides value to the public. And so even was limited, it was, it was significant. And though I do agree that their, that their reports provide useful information for good of the order, I think it would make more sense to me, really, to say, if you are, committee reports should be those things that are really necessary to inform consent and inform the public. And if there's things that are going to be related to the good of the order, save them for good of the order. Instead of reworking our orders of business, let's just rework the way we do committee reports. So I think the intent is great. I want to get behind it. But I don't think it's the best thing for us to do, really, quite honest. So I think what we have works, and I think if we use committee reports differently, instead of rearranging them, we can achieve the same thing without having to jump through some of the hoops that we're proposing to jump through. Thanks.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Hall?
Sure, thanks. Oh, interesting, definitely interesting questions to mull on. You know, I'm happy to support the proposal as is. But I am still interested in, you know, when I submitted the new business request, I was hoping we kind of have that broader discussion of some questions that I've been thinking about in my brain, including, you know, what are other cities in the region doing that are creative and kind of interesting that we might want to add to our order of business? I've also been thinking about accessibility. Is our use of language in our order of business accessible to the public that reads our agendas? Is there any, any way that we could be considering a change in language that way? Also, and I think this was inspired by comments made either by Councilmember Mertz or Councilmember Ray, when it first came to us, you know, starting to think about what does success look like? What does a successful agenda look like? And how do we measure whether or not that it's successfully meeting the outcomes that we want for, for a meeting agenda? So anyways, I just threw out this kind of restructured order of business as a jumping off point. But my intent was really to have this larger discussion. Sorry about that ding. Again, happy to support the current structure as proposed in this. I think there's value to testing it out. And I do think that based on community survey data, just data from our eyes looking out into the audience and on YouTube every night, there aren't very many people in the community that come to council meetings or watch council meetings for information. There are other avenues that they're looking for. So I do think that, that doing this restructure is in the best interest of us as a council. But I'd also like to live with it and then talk about it a little bit more, and still have that broader discussion. So I'd like to, I will be proposing an amendment that includes another council touch at a, at a committee of the whole meeting in the third quarter to get us all into this, which would do two things. One, it gets us some time to kind of test out the new structure as presented tonight. And two, it gives us an opportunity then consider those broader questions that we might have after we've had a chance to live with them for a little bit. So I won't make that motion right now, just in case there are other council members that want to speak. But it is my intent to amend the motion to have it come back to us again later in the year and have some of those questions answered by us. Thanks.
Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'll speak in favor of the main motion. I think that one of the things we need to think about is a lot, a number, we don't have a large audience watching our meetings, but if a person wants to find out what's going on on YouTube, it's always nice to have that at the beginning of the meeting, rather than having to scroll all the way through and, and try to find it at the, at the back end. So just for that kind of piece in terms of easily giving the ability to the public to find that information if they're searching for it, they know it's at the beginning, I think this is a good motion to support at this time. I'd be interested to hear the, the amended motion as well.
Any other comments? I will just go ahead and make mine. I'm strongly in favor of this. I think we have definitely shown through surveys and talking with the community that they don't watch council meetings in order to get their information. So I think this allows us to restructure, to allow staff to complete their work earlier, to allow people who want to engage on the items that are part of our regular business meeting to not have to sit through other things that they don't have to. I would note that on the YouTube channel, when someone goes to watch that, there are timestamps for all of the items. And so that allows them to navigate to the items quickly, whether it's the beginning or the end. This just respects the time of people who choose to watch this or attend in, in person. And so I am strongly in favor of this as originally motioned. So I will check to see if we have Councilmember DeMichelle.
Yeah, and I'll be hopefully brief. I support the motion, but I also, I think Councilmember Hall made some good points about, let's revisit, and let's see how this works. Let's, and then let's revisit. And I think the comments about, I think it's important for the community to know that all of us are on regional and, you know, larger interest committees, and that we serve that purpose for them, and that we're representing their interest on a broader level than just the city council. How do we do that effectively? And I think this is raising that question. I don't have an answer tonight, but I think it's a really, really good question to ask. And perhaps through this experiment, we can come up with a better way to communicate our involvement at that level, and what the community is getting out of that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. I think I'm opposed to this this evening, and here's why. I don't like doing experiments with how we run council. I love that we are an effective body that focuses on getting stuff done. And I think we're a more effective body than historically, over the 14 years that I've been on council, than other councils in the area. And I think if it ain't wrong, don't fix it. So I'm sort of small C conservative about our process. And this hasn't, nobody has convinced me that we need to do this. So if the, if the body chooses to do it, fine. But I guess my vote is, don't monkey around with things if we don't need to, because, you know, getting the collaborative ambiance, ambiance, if that's the right word to use, you know, the collaboration that we have with the administration, and the consistency of it is a rare and beautiful thing. And so I'm just, I'm nervous whenever anybody, when we go to move any of the levers on, on the subject. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thanks. So I'm going to move my amendment. So I move to amend the motion to include the following at the end, and to return to a committee of the whole meeting in quarter three to evaluate success and consider additional questions related to our order of business.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any conversation on the motion, or on the amendment? Excuse me. Councilmember Hall, or Ray?
Whoever I am. Thanks. No, I think it's a great idea. I think we should always, whenever we're changing things, particularly if we're not 100% sure of the outcome, that we make ourselves accountable to ourselves and to the public, that we will come back and evaluate. So I think it's a, it's a very intelligent, smart way to go.
And just a question for the clerk. This amendment, do we have a sense of which of the ordinances, or whether it would be the ordinance or the resolution that would be amended?
You know, technically, it's not amending either. It's sort of just addressing the work plan item, so it's providing direction. So I guess in, in brackets, we might add and direct the administration to return to a committee of the whole meeting. But it's germane to the item. I think it's appropriate to offer it as an amendment.
Okay, fantastic. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it all correctly as we go. So does the maker have any additional comments?
Sure. Well, just to say that, yeah, I think this is then now an opportunity for us to live with it for a little bit, and then come back and evaluate, is this working? Is it creating more problems than it is? My sense is, it's not, that it's, it's going to work just fine. It's going to create more opportunities for us to have conversations that tie in regional reports and good of the order, to kind of have conversations about, well, how do we measure success? Maybe we send out a survey at the end of the year to the council to say, did you like this update? Like, is it meeting your needs better? Or are you indifferent? I know some other councils do written regional reports that get included in the packet, which is a potential solution to the issue that Councilmember DeMichelle brought up. I don't know if that's something we want to do or not. But all these things, I think, are worthy of discussion up here on the dais. So the reason why I bring up this amendment. Thanks.
Okay, so at this point, we've got an amendment on the table, which is to amend the motion to add and to direct the administration to return to a committee of the whole meeting in quarter three to evaluate success and consider additional questions related to our order of business. So all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the amendment passes unanimously. And so at this point, I think we're back to the main motion amended. So the motion before the council is to adopt ordinance number 3006, amending IMC 2.06.100, city council meetings order of business, and approve resolution number 2023-04, amending the city council rules of procedure, section four, council meetings, and section six, standing committees, and to direct the administration to return to a committee of the whole meeting in quarter three to evaluate success and consider additional questions related to the order of business. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
That passes five to two. And?
Council President?
Yes.
I'm sorry for being so loud. I, I did not hear Councilmember Hunt, so she could clarify how she voted on that.
I voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So that passes five to two. And the next item of business is good of the order. And I know Councilmember Hunt, you had an item on that. I will give that to you first, as I look to see if there's anybody else who has an item for good of the order.
All right. Thank you, Council President Walsh. So the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting at our February 7th meeting, we started to discuss what materials we thought should be shared with council, when the Title 18 changes to our land use code comes back to the full council for review. And we had a beginning of that conversation, but we will continue that conversation at our next meeting, which is February 28th. And at that time, it'll be ID 1385, Title 18 Land Use Code Planning Policy Commission Recommendation. And so I wanted to raise to my fellow council members, if there are things that you think would be especially helpful, pieces of information that would be especially helpful, this would be a good time to, to raise those. So the administration will know to include those in the materials that come back to full council. So the items that we discussed initially would be the goals and outcomes chart, which was something that the ad hoc committee of this council produced towards the beginning of the Title 18 process. And it outlines at a very high level what we were setting out to do with this code update, and how we thought it could be done. And now, after, now as we're at the end of the process, it has information about which specific code changes address which of the goals and outcomes. There's also executive summary that has been prepared that we thought would be helpful. This has information about what sections have been added, as well as what areas have the most changes, and, and why, and what are those changes. It is a lot of code. It is a lot of text. And so we thought that this would help narrow down the areas that are, the areas that would be new, which could be potentially important for council to review, and also the areas with the most changes. So it helps, it helps narrow that, that review a little bit. And then we also thought it would be helpful to have a description of the code testing that was done. The staff did outreach with a number of individuals, as well as internal testing of the code, and to make sure it was usable and met all of our, our goals in terms of improved predictability, et cetera. And so we thought providing information about that process would be helpful, as well as a description of the public engagement and the work of our many very dedicated volunteer commissions. There has been a lot of public engagement, a lot of public comments, and a lot of tracking of those comments by our development staff. And so we thought that a summary of that would be helpful to give a full sense of how much, how much work has gone into this. And then lastly, the whiteboard items are items that have been identified as needing additional consideration, additional work after this Title 18 update. Some of those items have also been funded through the budget process by council, and some of them are whiteboard items in the sense that we know we need to do additional work, but it has not yet been, the work plan has not yet been fully worked out. So having an idea of what items are on that whiteboard would also be helpful. So that was the list that, the preliminary list that the committee talked about. My fellow committee members can please add anything if I missed anything. But really, just wanted to raise that as, as information for the council, also to, to let you know that this is coming to council soon. And so if you do have things, questions, things that you think would be helpful to you, as we start to review this as a whole council, I wanted to give an opportunity for that. Thank you.
So I will just chime in as another committee member here, that this is kind of like asking you to figure out what questions you're going to want when you haven't seen anything yet. But the information that Councilmember Hunt detailed here are going to be very useful. And I think there's also a sense that we may want to include some links to some of the particularly important YouTube meetings that we had, that really, if you're a, somebody could rather watch it rather than read it, those would be useful. There's also been an offer from staff, the city administrator, and community planning and development director, to have individual meetings to help you through this process. And then the other thing I was thinking, Councilmember Hunt, is that it might be useful to include the letters from PPC and the environmental board that we received, even though a lot of those items will have been addressed and probably would be listed in the description of the commission work. I think it's important, since those letters were addressed to the entire council, for the council members to receive that as part of that review. But I am sure, looking forward to this, guys. Councilmember Joe, no? Councilmember Ray?
Just a couple of things. One is, kudos to the ad hoc and to PDE for slogging through this. This was a huge amount of effort and lift, and it was done in a very businesslike way. This was a huge amount of effort and lift, and it was done in a very businesslike way. So I just wanted to recognize that. The where I keep going to is the very last bullet, which is the whiteboard items, because that's the big ambiguity about what is that? So if there's some additional information that we can provide for each of the items that are on the whiteboard that are, you know, in this parking lot that we know we need to work on it, but we haven't gotten to it yet, about what it is, when we think we'll get to it, why it's important, I think that would be really helpful, because it provides that wrapper around all the rest of the work and says, we didn't try and boil the ocean, we just tried to boil the Lake Washington. So anyway, super amount of work done in here, but just just a little more, or, and I don't even know what you're going to provide on the whiteboard, but to me, the whiteboard provides a huge amount of important context. Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt, did you need anything else from us?
No, I just wanted to add one additional thing, which is, I also recently learned that at our February 28th meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, we will also have an executive session. So we all have one item, ID 1385, Title 18 Land Use Code, and then we also have that executive session. Thanks.
Okay, great. And do we have any other good of the order items coming up from any other council members? No, it looks like we do not. There is, I have a few upcoming council meetings to announce. On Tuesday, March 7th, the regular city council meeting, there are currently no regular business items on that one, so we'll see what comes up with that. And then Monday, March 13th, the committee of the whole. Anticipated agenda items include the Title 18 Land Use Code Consolidated Draft and City Hall Planning Space Needs Assessment Results, both very exciting items. We do not have an executive session tonight, so there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you, everyone.